Good evening, we're live, I'm gonna call our meeting to order tonight. Um, I'd like to welcome all of you all, thank you for being here. Kim, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
President.
Uh, Ms. Pillion, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Quetch. Mike was asking me something.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Ms. Quetch, Mr. Webb.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
And Mayor Pillion.
Here. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Webb to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Now, I'd like to ask Stephen Vaughn, who's the pastor of Triggs Street Church of God and our fire department chaperon, to open our meeting in prayer.
This is hot. Don't like standing where I can't see everybody's face. So, used to be in the pulpit. So, um, would you stand with me? Would you bear it? Dear Stephen Vaughn, we thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight, to be used by you, to exercise our God-given intellect, our ability, our discernment for what is right and what is wrong. Lord, I pray for our elected leaders, that they would, Lord, continue to use their judgment for the best purposes, for our community, for our neighbors, to fulfill the call that you gave us to love one another, to do our absolute best, care for one another's burdens. Lord bless us tonight, minister through us in Jesus' name. And everyone said?
Amen.
Thank you. Now, we need to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion to do so?
Madam Mayor, I would like, before we approve the agenda, I want to give consideration tonight to a public forum between citizens and council. And so, I would like to have the draft agenda amended under item N., New Business, to say consideration of a public forum.
Do we have a second?
I'll sit with that.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, can will you please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
And Mayor Pillion.
Aye. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from three meetings to approve, and we can do this together or we can do it separately. Um, we have our March 4th, 2024 regular meeting, our March 21st, 2024 Finance Committee Budget Meeting, and our March 21st, 2024 mid-month meeting. Um, I guess we can do the, we can do them together.
Mayor, I was not present on March 21st, either at the Finance Committee meeting or the regular meeting on the 21st, so I would need to abstain from those.
So, what I was thinking is that maybe we will, um, have one motion to approve the minutes for March 4th, and then we will have a second motion to approve the minutes from the two meetings on March 21st, and then you can abstain from that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I move to approve the March 4th, 2024 minutes as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, it was approved by Mr. Austin, seconded by Mr. Webb. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Kim, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
And Mayor Pillion.
Aye. Now, we need to approve the two meetings that occurred on March 21st. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from those two meetings?
So, move.
I'll second.
To have a second by Mr. Webb, a, a motion by Mr. Webb, a second by Vice Mayor Anderson. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Kim, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
I will abstain due to work commitments. I was unable to attend either of those two meetings.
Thank you. Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
And Mayor Pillion.
Aye.
Okay. Now, moving on to public comments, we have one person signed up for public comments tonight. Mr. Lilly, if you'd like to come.
Thank you. I am Greg Lilly at 244 Valley Street Northeast, Abingdon, Virginia, 24210. At the March 21st meeting, there was a discussion of keeping the first block of North Court Street to one-way. Um, town council's discussion and comments from a few invited speakers reinforced the one-block, one-way traffic flow. Justification was based on crash data and additional parking spaces. The crash data was filtered to accidents caused by left turns from Court on the main. Uh, public comments doesn't give me the time to, for a complete statistical analysis of this crash data, but simply put, it averaged 1.4 crashes per year in the past five years. One per year. I don't think that's significant for something this drastic. I'm not a traffic engineer, but maybe something as simple as a low-left turn sign might work. The case for continuing one-way then falls to the extra three parking spaces. With the decision apparently already made without a public hearing, please remember that when one artery is restricted, the flow of traffic is pushed to the closest opening, and that, in this case, it's the alleys. We live at White's Alley and Plum Alley, both historic walkable lanes. Since the 2022 restriction of southbound traffic on that block of Court, a number of vehicles on these single-lane alleys has increased significantly. Again, these are narrow, single-lane roads. When a vehicle meets another one head-on, one of them has to back up into someone's yard so the other one can pass. This traffic is coming from people trying to get back around to Court Street since they cannot turn and go back the way they came in the opposite direction. I haven't seen competent justification to stay one-way on one block of a major street and push traffic to single-lane alleys. Our request that town allows Court Street to return to a two-way street and give peace, quiet, and safety back to our homes and neighborhood. This area is designated historic residential. Pushing traffic to a single-lane alley is not residential. All of this for three, for three additional parking spaces. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. No one else has signed up for public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment tonight? If not, we have a proclamation tonight designating April 5th, 2024 as Arbor Day. Mr. Webb is gonna read the proclamation for us.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so, before us, we have a proclamation designating April 5th, 2024 as Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And now, therefore, Mayor Amanda Pillion, Mayor of Town of Abingdon, do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2024 as Arbor Day in the Town of Abingdon, and I, and she urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed, Amanda Pillion.
Thank you. Okay. Tonight, we have a public hearing. Um, it's regarding the sale of real property located on French Moore Junior Boulevard, owned by the Town of Abingdon, namely 1.20 acres total, specifically 0.2 acres of Lot 8, tax map number 104-10-8, and 1 acre of Lot 10, tax map number 104-10-10. So, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? No one's signed up, but if there's anyone who would like to speak, we'd welcome you.
You want me to give my report?
Okay. That's fine, yes.
Okay. Um, good evening, Myanna Rice. So, Wellspring Foundation is wanting to find a permanent home. And, um, Mr. Cochran and I have been working with them for probably about a year, I guess, looking at different locations. We had provided them a list of, um, either buildings we thought were being underutilized or could be refurbished. We provided them a list of all of the parcels that we currently have for sale. And, um, they reached an agreement to purchase 848 French Moore Junior Boulevard, which is parcel 104-10-9. In the process, they have determined that the building that's located there is just a little too small, and the parking lot's a little too small. And so, they first came to us and asked if they could buy, um, two parcels, one on either side. And we worked carefully with them and said, you know, we have some, um, interest in these lots for the future. Would it be possible for us to keep viable lots and essentially sell a portion of two lots to you? And so, during that process, um, they looked at those, the locations, they looked at the topography, and said that actually would work. So, you'd end up selling 0.2 acres of Lot 8 and 1 acre of Lot 10. Um, during that process, um, we did have a, um, we did do an appraisal on several parcels in the area, as well as those parcels. And, um, so, the number that is being presented to you tonight is from that information. I don't know if you wanted to talk at all about that.
Yeah, if I could, I, I put an addendum to your package on your table. It's got the blue and white chart on it. But, uh, so, the, the two lots were the two adjacent lots that were initially under, under review. So, I had those, Mr. Mahappy down the street appraised those a couple months ago. Uh, and the one, uh, comes out at 2.49 acres, $1.52 a square foot, appraises it 165,000. And then, the other one is, uh, 1.43 acres, uh, 62,000 square feet, and appraises it at 2, uh, 150,000 or 241 a square foot. Um, by shaving the, the size off both lots, uh, you come up with the 1.2 that, that's requested to be purchased. Uh, and that's, uh, right at 90,000 or $1.72 a square foot. The, then, the nice version of how this works is we'll still have two marketable lots on either side. We're gonna have to do a, a boundary adjustment on the, on the lot, on the lot sizes. But the, uh, if you look at it on GIS and the topography out there, the, the office that he's buying, the lot that it's on, that they're actually, they're actually using, would fit on the, what we're gonna be left with, on the one smaller lot. So, um, while, uh, while there is a sale and it accommodates their need, it still leaves us with two viable, marketable lots. Uh, 'cause I do believe in the long run, that that way it'll have a, uh, a better value at some point in the future.
And so, the steps for that transaction is their request, um, is here tonight. This is a public notice and hearing for the sale of property. Um, we would need you all to make a motion, um, to sell the property. Um, Wellspring would then have to do a survey of that real property in order for us to officially transfer it to them. Um, we would then go through the process of dividing two parcels that we own, um, and then doing a lot combination to create two existing viable leftover parcels, as well as their one larger parcel. Um, so, they're asking for that, um, land to be sold for, um, $90,000 for 1.20 acres. So, that's what we have. Um, if, I don't know if they would like to come over and talk to us. Sean McMurray is here, if you all would like to ask him any additional questions.
Thank you, Myanna. And, uh, happy to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, it has been a process that we've been talking to, uh, both Mr. Cochran and Ms. Rice for some time, and feel like we've come up with an equitable compromise that would allow us to be able to move into an almost move-in-ready building. Uh, and considering the cost of construction these days, uh, that turned out to be a, a pretty good option. Um, the other thing it allows us to do is it gives us just a little bit of space for some expansion. Uh, and, uh, while we don't have an immediate plan to do that, we can anticipate doing that in the not-too-distant future.
Can you tell those who don't know what, what you're gonna be doing with the property? What, what business is gonna be going in there?
Yes. It will house our, um, our organization, which is the Wellspring Foundation of Southwest Virginia. We're a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit. Uh, we're a private foundation, and we exist to enhance the health and well-being of the people that live in the southwest Virginia counties of Washington, Russell, Smith, and Grayson. And, uh, and so, we, um, we plan to be here for a long time, trying to, uh, make an impact positively in the community. And, uh, this is where we'd like to have our headquarters.
Thank you. And you're currently in the incubator across the street.
We're currently in the incubator, which has been a wonderful home. Um, we're just looking for something permanent that we can own.
Do we have any more questions?
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Then I will close the public hearing if there's no additional comments. Public hearing is now closed. So, now, we have the resolution approving the sale of a portion of property from two tax parcels, town, uh, tax map number 104-10-8, and tax map number 104-10-10. Um, is there any more discussion that we need to have before we, um, make a motion to accept this resolution? To approve this resolution?
Kim, do we need to dispel a second reading, or does this require a second?
It doesn't.
Okay, well, then I will accept a motion to, um, approve the sale of the portion of property.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
And, Mr. Anderson, if you'll include, uh, that the
The sale of
Town Attorney can draw up the paperwork, and the Town Manager can endorse the proper paperwork.
Sure.
Okay, so, the motion was made by Vice Mayor Anderson. It was seconded by Mr. Webb. Is there any
I accept this amendment, yes.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Kim, will you please call the roll for a vote?
Mr. Austin.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
And Mayor Pillion.
Aye.
Okay, we have a first reading of an ordinance. Um, it is to repeal, amend, and reenact Chapter 58 Solid Waste, Division 2 Town Collection, and Division 3 Containers. Town Manager Mike Cochran will discuss.
Uh, yes, ma'am, thank you. The, uh, as you know, last year, we did a massive, uh, revision, replace and revise on, on our ordinances. And this, uh, as, as it currently stands, uh, this wasn't the intent of the ordinance. What's happening is if someone's, uh, has a house, and let's say they don't live in it for two months, they're wanting, uh, to, they're wanting to, uh, use the existing language to say, "Oh, you need to waive my trash fees for that month," but at those two months. And that really wasn't the intent. The intent, uh, in, in, it's in other parts of the ordinance. The intent was to make it so that, um, that if you have a house that, you know, had storm damage, someone can't live in, it's under major renovation, uh, that was the idea behind it. So, it was uninhabitable, uh, which means it doesn't have utilities, and it's, you know, dilapidated, things along those lines. That was the intent behind that section. So, we've gone in and revised the ordinance to meet the intent that was placed there when we first passed through it. And I think it'll, it'll solve, because right now, you have people that have houses for sale and things like that. Regardless of, of, you know, why they're vacant, they're viable homes, they're just sitting vacant, and they're, they're applying for waivers. And that's just, you know, from a staff perspective, it's a, it's a lot of extra work, 'cause, uh, you know, in this case, now, they own their cans, so we don't go get the cans. And then, who knows when they put the can back out? It's, uh, it's just not workable. And so, the, the revision is what was intended to be.
Do we have any questions for the Town Manager about this ordinance? So, we can also, if we would like, we can waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance tonight. Um, so, if anybody wants to make a motion to, um, approve it or to, and to waive the second reading, then we can do that.
I'll make that motion and waive the second reading.
I'll second that.
So, the motion was made by Ms. Quetch. There was a second by Vice Mayor Anderson. Is there any discussion on this matter? If there's no discussion, can will you please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
And Mayor Pillion.
Aye.
So, we have no second reading of ordinances, nor do we have any consideration of bids. We do have some new business to discuss, and, um, I will let Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. Lilly, uh, who spoke to Died, and also spoke at the last meeting, uh, I think brought up a very valid point that oftentimes, the town council and the citizens who attend these meetings don't have the opportunity to actually exchange information and, uh, to, uh, to discuss various topics that are important in the town. And I consider to give some thought to that after he, uh, mentioned that at the last public comment in the meeting. And I think it's a very valid point, and I, I think that we, as a town council, should give consideration tonight to adopting a public forum. Uh, my suggestion would be, uh, and it's certainly open for discussion, but my suggestion would be that we add it to our mid-month meeting each month, regardless of whether or not we have a, uh, an agenda for that particular meeting. I think there was some discussion that, that, uh, we'd only do it on those meetings, but I think we should do it every meeting. I think we should do it once a month. Uh, and that is to discuss matters that are important to the general public and to the town council. Uh, I think there need to be some rules, or for lack of a better term, I suppose, some restrictions on how we handle that. Uh, and some notes that I've made here that I would like for us to consider, uh, as I said, that be added to the mid-month meeting agenda each month, that, uh, no less than five business days prior to that meeting, that if someone is interested in discussing something with council, that they communicate that to Mr. Cochran's office or to Ms. Kingsley, such that it can, can be included. Uh, they can do that by email, uh, letter, or certainly in person. That we would have a maximum, no more than five individual topics each public forum. And that we would allot a maximum time of, and again, just a suggestion, 15 minutes to each topic, so that we can cover more topics that, that might be important. If we have more than five topics, for example, that someone would want to discuss at the May meeting, then the first five would go on the May meeting, and we'd take the other one or two, move it over to the June meeting. But, but we would, uh, certainly allot time for each, uh, each topic. And this would differ from, from the, uh, public comment time, which, as was correctly pointed out to us, we don't really exchange information. We listen to what folks have to say. Uh, and as you can tell, it certainly makes an impression on me and I'm sure other members of the council. Uh, but we don't exchange ideas at that time. So, this public forum would be an opportunity for us to, uh, to exchange ideas. I continue to, uh, say that if, if anyone has a topic that they feel is important, I am certainly available individually. And again, I know, uh, other members of the council I am certainly available individually, and again, I know other members of the council here, to talk with anyone by email, letter, or the old-fashioned in-person type of discussion and make myself available to, to discuss those topics. So that is my suggestion and I put it before the council.
I do like your suggestion, but instead of five, I say three.
Three.
Three, three per session. Just so we can, the three topics that we have in front of us, that we will know what's coming instead of five.
That's correct.
Lesser time, more time for us to explain what's going on during the meeting for the three topics that we have going on, not five.
Well, and I, and I certainly like that. And the only purpose of doing that is so that, that we, I mean, of advance notice is so that we as council can, you know, intelligently do our investigation.
Sure, sure.
Know what's going on and be prepared to, to do it, to do an intelligent exchange of information.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I agree. I don't think it would be useful if we weren't prepared and somebody came and asked us questions. We don't know the answers to everything all the time. So that way we can do our homework and that would be the most efficient way to handle it, I think.
Yes.
May I suggest a, your council package goes and is delivered to you five business days prior to. If I'm getting that at last minute, because sometimes my agenda is final at three o'clock so I can prepare to print and all those things, can we maybe suggest seven days or six days?
Seven days is great.
Yes. So I just wanted to
Seven business days?
That would be great.
And three topics, can we, are we all on the
And three topics.
Are we all on the grid with that?
Can we call it something other than public forum that's, that kind of has some weight to it? Public discussion, I think, is, is fine.
Whatever.
And I think, to your point, it doesn't, just because you submit something doesn't mean that automatically it's going to go on the agenda. You guys are elected to control the agenda and run the public meetings. So it would be a suggestion, a public discussion to send to the manager and then up to council whether to include it on, on the agenda for that meeting.
Fair enough.
And I'd also like to add this too. This is new. And while I think we're all in favor of trying it out, I'd like to, as we approve this, just understand that we may make adjustments along the way as we decide how this, if, if something works or if something doesn't work or if something could be better. If we give ourselves that leeway to develop this process to make it the most efficient that we can and the most useful to our citizens.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. It, it sounds as though there is some consensus. So based upon that, I would like to make a motion that we begin a public discussion each mid-month meeting, beginning with the, with the month of May, that there be, any person who would like to suggest a discussion or a topic would notify Mr. Cochran's office or Ms. Kingsley at least seven business days prior to that meeting, such that that can be given to council and, and discussed. That there be a maximum of three topics at each of these public discussion sessions and that the maximum time that, that we would have on a topic would be fifteen minutes.
Agreed.
And people can still come and speak in public comments if they would, if they would prefer to do that.
Absolutely.
So we can have both ways. We can have both ways of communicating.
That still remains three minutes.
Right, right.
We have a motion on the floor.
Mayor Pillion. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
So a motion by Mr. Austin, second by Vice Mayor Anderson. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, can we please call the roll for a vote? Mr. Austin.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
And Mayor Pillion.
Aye.
Okay. Well, we'll try that out and see how it goes. We have no old business on the agenda. We do have some business and communications from the town manager. Firstly, we have the annual State of the Tree report and I will welcome our town arborist, Kevin Sigmund.
I will be brief with this lady back here when we jump and smack me. She's my sister. In more ways than one. Madam Mayor, members of town council, town manager Cochran, it's always an honor to get to speak before you guys about this time of the year to kind of give you an idea of how things have been going with the trees here. I love the fact that this year we called it the State of the Trees address rather than the Annual Arborist Report, which I think is probably very apropos. Just, just want to highlight a few things for you here from this past year. Of course, the biggest thing is Abington remaining a Tree City USA. It's been twenty-three years for us now. And Virginia has, just for an information sake, or Virginia has sixty-five Tree City USA communities. And Abington continues to be the westernmost community. We, we tried to work with the town of Lebanon this past year and we thought that might work out, but it did not. So Abington is still it and so we're very grateful for the support that you guys give us. We had our Arbor Day celebration at Abington High School last year and it was a great time. And we really appreciate everything that goes on with that. Tree plantings this past year remains as always our memorial trees up in Veterans Memorial Park. We were able to get some trees in, in the front yard over here at the visitor's center to replace that large ash tree that we had to take down. We got the, some large trees planted over at the splash pad there at the meadows. And then we got some trees planted up there in a field up above the Creeper Trail parking lot. And so those were the main ones and so that's, it's a good start for this year as well. Another big highlight for us is the tree giveaway program. This past year, we gave away over thirteen hundred trees at our tree giveaway event, which was a very, very big step for us. It was a large increase. Very grateful to the Department of Forestry, who provided a grant for us from the Virginia Trees for Clean Water program that they have that allowed us to get up to that number. And so it went off, it went off very well and it's going to continue to do so. The Inflation Reduction Act grant funding came in this past year and Abington is working with the Creeper Trail Club for removing dead ash trees, dead and dying ash trees out on the Creeper Trail. There's several other trees down there that need to be, that need to come down as well. That is a matching grant. Abington got, or Creeper Trail Club got the grant for thirty thousand dollars. And so the town's having to, through the efforts that we're doing in terms of taking down the trees that we can take down, we're matching that right now. And so that effort is going on and will continue to do so. And fortunately, this is a, we can reapply for that in, in the years ahead. The memorial tree that we were able to plant out there at Veterans Memorial Park for Cameron Craig was a, was a very good thing there. We appreciate everybody's attendance and the cooperation that we have with the Veterans Memorial Park Board of Directors on that. The elm tree that we planted out there for Mr. Craig, last time I checked on it, it's still doing very well out there and it's in a very good spot. And I think everybody was very happy with that. One thing I was able to do this past winter over there in Veterans Park is starting to expand the mulching beds out there around the trees. This is not only going to help improve the vitality of the trees out there, but also keep the lawnmowers away from them a little bit more. And so that's something that I want to be able to try to, in times ahead, try to expand into other parks and maybe over at the Coombs Center as well. Speaking engagements, continue to work with the Washington County Master Gardeners as well as Russell County Master Gardeners. This past fall, I was able to do programs for the College of Older Adults over at the Higher Ed Center. And, and this area hosted the state conference for the Virginia Master Naturalists. And we were able to have a little tour over at Veterans Memorial Park. And I can tell you that was incredibly well-received. We had numerous people there basically said they wish they had what we have here. So that is a very good, very good thing there. Continued association with the Town of Marion, Trees Virginia Board of Directors and the MAC ISA Board of Directors as well. And of course, I'm always available to assist any property owner here inside the town that has questions regarding trees on their, on their private property. I can come in and act as a consultant and, and kind of help them out as much as I can there with that. Goals and objectives for this year, this coming year, of course, continue with our Tree City USA designation. We have been approved for that and of course, we'll celebrate that with Arbor Day here coming up this Friday. The tree giveaway program is slated for April twenty-seventh. We have a grant from the Virginia Federation from independent colleges. It's basically financing the entire thing for, for this year. This came with the heat study that we had several years ago. And this is the second grant that Abington, as well as nine other communities in the state that participated in that heat study, that they're giving us this money for that. And so we're using that money for that and we're going to be able to give away over fourteen hundred trees for this year. The registration for the, for the general public opened up today and it got on the town Facebook page. And I looked, I looked this afternoon and it's already been shared umpteen times already. And so it's, it's, it's growing and I think it won't take long for us to have all those trees spoken for very quickly. We're going to continue to work with the Department of Forestry with the Inflation Reduction Act and make sure that's going well. One of the things that's coming up with that and this kind of caught me by surprise, but it, it's coming in. We've already had some meetings on this, is something called the Community Forestry Volization Program. This is part, this is being funded through the IRA Act. And the Department of Forestry has hired several contractors to come and help and assist communities throughout the state that, with their urban forestry programs. And they've got a list of things that they can help us with. I've already talked to some people, met, met with a couple of young ladies last Thursday. What it looks like the Town of Abington might be able to do here with this is that our tree inventory is over seventeen years old here. And our master, tree master plan is, is such, is also is over seventeen years old. So I think those are our biggest needs right there. And I think if, it's called the Green Infrastructure Center, based out of Richmond, they can come up here and assist us with that. I think that'll be a very good thing. We can get a new tree inventory so we know what we've got out there. I think especially now that, you know, things are settling down with the ash trees specifically. New plantings, we've got plants, a plant out here at the, at the bike track out here, out here at the meadows, over here at Russell Road where we put in the new road going in, the connecting road right there and as well as Veterans Park. We've got those, got those places set and ready to go, as well as where we put in the new banner pole out here at, out here at Cummings Street. Continue now that I've got more time here with the town now that I'm working full-time. Continue with the structural pruning and street and pedestrian clearance pruning throughout the town. Got a big lack of that done last year, but there's still a lot more to do on that and we'll continue with that. Continue our association with Trees Virginia and MAC ISA. Those are two incredibly good groups to work with and I'm proud to be a part of them. And continue to, continue as a consultant for, for anybody here in the town. So, and of course, the big thing here is, of course, we read the proclamation just, just a few minutes ago. Our Arbor Day celebration is going to be at Abington Elementary this coming Friday at one, or Abington Elementary School this coming Friday at one thirty. Weather's not looking real good right now. We may have to just do the inside part, I don't know. We'll just have to wait and see. But because it's going to get back down in the forties again, we'll just, I'll be, I'll be in contact with Principal Johnson over there and we'll make some plans here as, as we get closer to that. But we'd love to have you guys, have everybody out there for that. And I'll open it up to any questions, anything? Again, guys, I really truly appreciate the support you give my, my position. All these years that I've been able to be here with this, trust me, this is a very unique situation here. We, and it is certainly something that is not seen in all my association with other urban foresters, arborists throughout the state. This is a very unique and real highly thought-of situation here and I really do appreciate your support.
The town appreciates you too, Kevin. I seen you Friday when I was actually going to work in front of the, the old cave house. Appreciate you checking out the tree there in front of the lawyer's office that I thought was dead. And the spraying of the sidewalks with everything that.
I'm, I'm giving, that's going to be a big part of my work this year.
I think, I think that it's looking good right now. So thank you for everything you do, Kevin, for the town of Abington.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
When the decision is made whether we're going to be indoors or outdoors, can you let Ms. Kingsley know so she can choose to text?
I will.
You know?
I will.
Okay.
Just bring a raincoat or parka. So anyway, yeah, it's going to be a bunch of second reading. So you can buy a bunch of little shovels. Shovel, age, size appropriate shovels for them. That'll be good. One way or another, it may not be Friday, but we'll get the tree and so, okay. Thank you guys very much.
Appreciate it.
Now we'll turn it over to Mr. Cochran for our twenty twenty-three year in review.
Yes, I keep you printed copies in case you can't always see the thing up top. Basically, the years go by and we get, we get a lot of stuff done at St. and y'all get, you know, reports and updates and see stuff. But I think sometimes it's good to take a step back and actually see what we did this past year. And we've done a lot. It's kind of, I just wanted to go through some of these things. Infrastructure is one of our, one of the things that public works has a lot to do with because they either form the work or they contract it out. And I put the source of funding on some of these projects, but the Greensprings Culver, that, that was done last year or the beginning of, beginning of fiscal year. Main Street flooding, we had a meeting on that this morning and that's going up to bid right now. It's going to be set up to bid in two phases. The first part is under Main Street and the second part will be under Park Street. But that's going out and it should be, should be under, under construction sometime around the end of May, the first part of it. And the second part should be done shortly thereafter. But that's, that's been a long, long process getting that done to get us a market-funded project. And then the Park Street sidewalks, this is a twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen project that's finally, finally ready to go out where it's going to get actually built. And again, that's putting the decorative lighting and the brick sidewalks down Park Street. And, sorry, this is, that's actually a DOT project, sorry about that. East Main Street sidewalk in front of the Dallas General, the Town of Abington and VDOT. And some of these projects, I hear, I was talking to someone recently on Colonial Road and they wanted to know like, why don't we have sidewalks on Colonial Road? Money. It is incredibly expensive to build sidewalks. That section in front of the East Main, that was somewhere near about three hundred thousand dollars. It's only a couple hundred feet of sidewalk. It's just incredibly expensive to do those things. The trussel repairs, those are almost done. That's going to be the, that's where they took bridge trussel for and they reinforced it and then got everything out of the water. So it's no longer going to have that problem. They just do reinforcement and then shore up the two other trusses. The sanitary sewer, this is a long, long, long-term project for sanitary sewer. That's going to go up to, to bid real soon and we're going back and forth as far as the wording. And that'll be Whitesville Road. And we're starting off a public notification, trying to make sure that everybody knows between direct net, directly letting folks know, putting message board signs out there, door hangers. We're going to do everything to make sure folks know what's coming. And then additionally, the folks that live adjacent to, that may live on Side Street, that don't have sewer right now. If they want to get that attached, this will be the time to do it. And so ideally, they'll, they'll get with their neighbors that also want to be connected and we should be able to do that. They still have to pay the relative tax fees and things along those lines, but this is the time to do it because they'll be doing it in advance. The Cook Street extension, this got approved last year and it's on DOT's budget. So it's that Cook Street that will go from where, what's the old Kmart and will go over to Stone Mill Road. Phase two of that is still, still being reviewed by DOT. And once that goes through, then that will actually get over to where Mr. McMurray's office is going to be over there in the industrial park with the technology park. So the staff has a great relationship with, with the DOT. That's part of the reason this thing was, it got where it's supposed to be. Their whole idea, when they look at these things, the intersection in front of the federal courthouse and our visitor's center, it's the least well-performing intersection in all of the Bristol District. And the Bristol District's a pretty good-sized district for DOT. So when they have an opportunity to improve the traffic flow there, that's one of the things they want to do. And by this project in particular, if there's an incident on the interstate, like a couple of weeks ago, there was a hole in one of the, that's mile marker sixteen point one, a hole in one of the pieces of bridge. So they had to shut it down for a couple of days. So the idea is, is that when they have these things in place, they can dump the traffic and it will cut through there instead of coming down Main Street, which I know every time there's an incident on the interstate, you can tell because it becomes a parking lot out here. So anything that we can do to get them to help make it happen, we're happy to help them make happen. The Thompson Street, this came up a couple of months ago where the DOT is pushing this one through. The nice thing about this is if you look at the map The nice thing about this is if you look at the map for it in front of the school board office, right where the, if you're going to the Coon Center, they're going to have a traffic circle there. And they're also adding sidewalks. So you'll be able to connect the sidewalks from, basically from the CBS all the way up to the high school itself. And then parallel to that, I've also had discussions with the school district. We're going to see what we can't do to get the, to be able to connect it all the way down past the cemetery so that our, our students and whatnot will have the ability to walk there without walking out into, into traffic. And whoever dropped a kid off at the high school early in the morning, there's kids walking up that street. So there's a method to the madness. But that, that particular project there is eight point five million dollars, and that is in process right now. The exit seventeen, after three, maybe four iterations of changing the signage, the deal where we're finally now where I think most of the signage is there, the signs that we are waiting on is the, the yellow, like, kind of the ones we just put at Collins Street, the yellow LED ones that are solar. We're going to be putting two of those. Right now, we have a no outlet signs. We're putting another one there, but they'll both have solar light on them with the solar-powered LEDs that are flash. Because unfortunately, some of the drivers, either from memory or whatnot, are still, you know, if you're driving over the road and you're trying to get on the interstate and you're not paying attention, you just know that the exit used to be there from muscle memory. So they're going down there and getting stuck, and that's just causing issues. And so, but the signage for DOT, I mean, we worked with them and walked the intersection several times to move signage to make sure that it's all where it's supposed to be. So ideally, you'll have less and less of that mistaken traffic. It's just unfortunate that it does happen. But we're hoping the LED signs will help as well. And then, as you know, Valley Street, last year, we had a traffic study done on Valley Street. And like when we do these things, we just can't do them because it seemed like a good idea at the time. We want to have engineers take a look at this stuff and give us their solutions because sometimes like what's preferential in, in engineering today isn't, wasn't something that you learned ten years ago. And so they go through and they look at all the current trends, what's acceptable and what needs to be done. And an example of that is when we redid the striping on there, they, they stripe it and they put the, the crosswalk right back where the crosswalk had been at Collins Street and Valley Street. But unfortunately, it dumped right onto somebody's driveway. And when that was done way back in the day, it wasn't, that was an acceptable thing. But subsequent to that, it's changed. So, long story short, we had to grind up freshly applied, applied stuff and then move it. And then we put in handicap accessible ramps for both there and further down. So as, as things change, you'll see, you know, we want to make sure that the engineers look at the stuff and see what they can do. And so on, on Valley Street, we added those signs, they got a little bit more about that in a second. And then one of the other things that we do, and this is Public Works primarily when working with DOT, there's multiple funding projects that they have. And so for East and West Main Street, one of the challenges you have is you have this sea of asphalt and, or blacktop, whatever you want to call it. You have a couple of these areas where it's really, really wide and it's just not pretty appealing. And so you can get into town and it's very charming and appealing. But to the other sections, it's really just kind of this wide sea of asphalt. And so we've asked DOT to help out with that. They came up with several designs for us. We had some community input on those to see what, what the options were. But the ultimate plan there is to increase pedestrian safety and to increase the visual appeal of East and West Main Street. Part of that study also was like the crosswalks that we have is, so everywhere we have a crosswalk, like the one in front of Bone Fire in that general area, when you get there, unless the traffic sees you, you're already out into the traffic lane before they see you. And so we're going to be putting some little bump outs in those areas to make it so that the area that you have to actually cross the street is a lot shorter. And it should help pedestrian safety overall, although we have very few traffic incidents like that. We start, anything we can do to enhance safety within reason there is something that we're going to want to do. And this is an example of like the pedestrian safety thing. And the bottom right-hand picture is relatively new. And this was, this was actually the vigilance back there had brought this issue up, and we went and looked at it. And it's at the top of the hill. And so the pedestrian crosswalk is there, but unless you're, unless you're a local, you don't know it's there until you get right up on it. And so the idea is, we had those put up right away. And now it's, now you obviously know it's a, it's a crosswalk. Because if you get a, you're in a tourist town, in this area, you've got construction, so you've got tourism, then you have this crosswalk in the middle of the intersection, the top of the hill. And then if you get the top of the hill, you only can see this beautiful building off to the left and, but there's also pedestrians. So those little things are really handy. So we put those out. They tend to get hit by cars relatively regularly. That's just the cost of doing business on those. And then the pedestrian crossing, we just put those at Collins Street. We had some spares. We'll be going to the rectangular ones, similar to what we have at Russell Road, and similar to the ones in front of the barter, and a couple of the crosswalks in Valley to add to that. And then part of what the chief did last year, Police Chief Holbrook, was he bought some radar signs because part of what happens with, with traffic is there's the perception of speed and then the reality of speed. And there's a lot of different things that play into that. But so like if you have a, a school bus, and the school bus going twenty-five into twenty-five and you're standing right there, it seems like it's going really fast because it's big and it's loud, even though it's not really going fast, but the perception is that it is. And so the, the nice thing with the radar signs is while they do emit a radar signal, and radar detectors are illegal in Virginia anyway, so I don't know that there's a whole ton of folks using them. If there are, let the chief know, I suppose. But the, the thing is, there's not a lot of, of usage on those things. But the nice thing is, is this goes through and it's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and it tells you where your, where your speed times are. So from the, from the chief's side, if every day at two-thirty, you know, school lets out and every day you see a kid going forty-five, then you know where you need to be. It's a good enforcement tool, but then it also allows us as staff to go in and take a look at the data and see what the averages are. And in this case, you know, you've got an average of twenty-seven. The only drawback on these machines is that it doesn't, the drawback on machines is it doesn't let you see who the speeder was. Because like if you look at the number of ambulances we have, sometimes you have a few people in the higher speed ranges, but you don't know how many people were emergency vehicles and ambulances because they're not, there's no way to break them out from the study. So, but as a general rule, they're, they're really good information. It lets you see it on a regular basis. And chief can actually get that stuff remotely and then publish as needed. So those two, and then as, also, one of the things that, that we've tried to get done is promote more tourism. And last year, as we have for years, we've supported the Barter Theater. You know, as Katie had reported over here, it was a hundred and twenty thousand visitors this season. And that's a huge number because we, you saw the numbers from two years ago. A lot of the places will tell you, oh, we're coming back. They are back. And then you look at their data and they are back. So it's a really good thing. It's nice that we as a town can support them for that. Our meals and lodging is, is up over last year, which is a nice thing. The Farming Market, as Mr. McLeish will tell you, they had a great year. You go there even on the coldest days and there's still people there. I don't like farm fresh eggs, but I don't like being out there when it's twenty. So nonetheless, but that place is, does a really good business over there. And with Mr. Austin, I'm sure he has seen them, but the banner poles are back. And that was, that was a staff doing, and that took a lot, a lot more, a lot more time and energy than we thought it was going to take just to make it actually happen. But we put them up and what we actually put up is a slightly, I'm told is a more rugged pole than what we had. The others were round, these are square. And they're a little more sturdy than, than, than the other ones were. Now, we did have to change the location just very slightly, and that's what led to some of the delays. But where they're at now, our staff can load them and unload them a whole lot quicker because they can literally just pull into the driveway and make it happen. So, but, so those are back. We hope that adds to tourism. We'll see, there's a mix, it either does or doesn't. Either way, it's going to make these look a whole lot nicer. And so it's just a nice thing when you come in, as in my view, is when you get to the small towns, you see banners, and it's just a cool thing. The Hans Christian decorations, staff did a great job with those things. We added like twenty-nine, I believe, or twenty-six of the additional wreaths. And I got a little slide on that a little bit. We went to do January Janes because of scheduling, it became Winter Janes because it was January and February. But we've actually had, they had some, some music at the Martha, apparently it was very well-received by the Martha. And Tony sent me some videos, it was great music, I just couldn't get to it. And then the other thing that staff does, particularly in tourism, is targeted advertising. We have some pretty sophisticated analytics and Chad is just really, really good with that stuff. So we've been very, very measured with how we do the advertising. Because they're able to go in and actually tell you by neighborhoods, like in, in certain towns where they come from. There's nothing personally identifiable, but it really is handy. Rather than just shotgunning out advertising, you can, you can target it. So that really is good stuff. And then tourism is very good at getting their grants for in-kind advertising. And then the two cars on Main Street, the first one was the, the local car club, and that was a hot day. And then the second day was, I was stuck at a volleyball tournament, which was a great tournament in Christiansburg. But the other, and we had a second one, and that was actually a fundraiser for the Command and Commander's Memorial. And one of the things we do as staff also is like the arts and cultural enrichment. And this is just something to add to the, with the barter. So we own the building, obviously. And then we support the barter, not their operations, but they spend about three hundred fifty thousand a year on advertising. So as part of what we do with our two hundred thousand is that goes to help support their advertising. Because advertising helps them and it brings in tourists, and that's what's good for the town. And then they have their, their rent. Now, we're, right now, we just signed a contract to get their roof done. Not all the roof, but the metal part's good. It's just everything but the flat parts are bad. So they're getting that fixed. And so staff is going to be, you know, work on that relatively soon. We hope to get the repairs done to the top part of it before they open for the season. The William King, another arts thing, and so we helped them because they had some, some financial goals they were trying to get to. And so we did sponsor them this past, this past couple of few months ago. And then the RCP, this is, it's crazy, but it's, the RCP is a wonderful little facility. And again, we own the facility. We just spent twenty-four thousand dollars because it's lead-based paint. So you just can't paint it because you want to, you had to paint it the way it had to be done. And so, you know, we as the town did sponsor that and we did make it happen. It's a neat little facility, neat little place. If you haven't been in there in a while, it is worth, of course, your time to walk into. With business support, community development, they work, and mine has been a constant driver to make this slightly a better process for folks. So whether you're a builder or whether you're a business, when you want to come in for a new business, you know, they'll get all the relevant people in one room with you to sit down and say, okay, well, what are you trying to do and how do you want to get there? And their goal isn't to say no. Their goal is to tell you what, what they can do to help you move it forward, which is just, it's a different approach because sometimes think government is, government's job is to say no, and it's not our goal. Our goal is to help facilitate commerce. And like this past year, one of the things we did do was we addressed some zoning issues in our, in our historic district and our main business, their affairs, in order to keep the beltway and businesses out. And I believe the long-term takeaway from that is it's going to be good for business and good for the town. We've got Shake and then Heart of Cole, we've got some other businesses that are coming in, even our own incubator at the old train station. The Photography Place has moved into Main Street right off of where Perspicacity was at, the same location. So that they've moved out. And then the three forty-three, the Cabinet Shop on, on East Main, that is now Spinkers is it called? So, you know, the, our incubator is actually incubated, which we're, we're glad to see that. And so, again, we try and make that happen for them. And then the Commons, that's open, it's still got more to come. There's still a long construction process, but that has come along really well. And also under construction in town is the Urgent Care Center up at the HMG, up at the medical facility over that way. And I don't know, they're interested in opening time. And then Kurt's Ace Hardware, I go by there three times a week and they've got some of the fastest bricklayers I've ever seen. That's under construction, and I tell you, I've never seen construction build so fast. And then Firestone is also under construction, that's also by the Meadows. And then the United Way, the old Kmart redevelopment, that is moving along, I believe, August is their moving date. And then Gibson's Auto, Auto Center, that is also, they moved in and we went to their actual dedication about two weeks ago, so that is open. And from the recreation side, we've got some great things happening with recreation. The Coon Center, the Active Aging Program. And so staff and I have gone to a couple of different towns and cities around the state to look at what they were doing for some of their senior stuff. And because we call it active aging because in some places we learned, if you call it seniors, sometimes they'll just like open the door and let people out and you're, then you're with folks that maybe need a little more attention than you're capable of giving. So with the Active Aging, they do adult swimming, rec tech. As, as the tech in the family that had to like always explain where icons were to my father, it was really challenging. So it was nice, it's our, our younger tech-oriented staff members are working with, with the seniors at the, I mean, at the Coon Center. And last time they had about forty of them there going through like how to use your phone, how to set up your voicemail, how to set up your email. Just small little things like that that are really challenging, particularly if they're, if their kids that can help them aren't in the same house or the same town. And Social Joe is another one. They have coffee up there and they get thirty-five to forty on average. The first time they had about seventy-five people there, and we have a local coffee shop that sponsors it. So it's just, it's good community for the, the folks that are wanting to be there. And then the balanced glasses are also important from a whole health-life balance thing. Because if you lose your balance, then you'll fall and then you hurt, break your hip and all that stuff. So if we can help them stay healthy, it's just good for the community in general. The outdoor heater pool is on, pool heater is on order. If you've been to the pool in June, you'll know why we want a pool heater, because it takes till August till it's warm enough to get into and then it gets cold again. So the outdoor pool heater is on order. We hope to have that in and installed and operational by May, the end of May, when, when the pool opens. That opens May twenty-fifth. And then about a month or so ago, we opened up Sunday hours at the Coons. That was something that was really anticipated and we've had a really good response to that so far. And so folks are out there on the, on the weekends as well, or on Sundays. And then summer camp, last year, we did a summer camp out of necessity because there was one in the, in the county that had been planted, was shut down. We had some places where some employees were at and their stuff got shut down for their kids. So we, we created one. And then we had, we wound up having to absorb some from another program that had, that had shut down at the last minute. But then the nice thing was, is we were able to provide summer camp, and it wasn't just stick them in a closet and give them an iPad. It was actually like activities. So one of them, I spoke to one of the fathers and he was like, every day the kid gets in the car, before they get to their house, they're already asleep in the car, they're just worn out, which is kind of the idea. So they're having fun, which is a neat thing. So we were able to provide that and then the after-school program, we're doing those. But the nice thing is, is they're paying for themselves. It's not costing us money. And the nice thing, so it gives the kid something to do rather than sit at home or be a latchkey kid. And I think the kids get a really good interaction out of it, as do our employees. And then the freshening of the Coons, staff has been working on this for a while, but we also, we got like a thing called Fitness On Demand. And if you've ever had to like do some of the videos, like some, some of the things that folks do, you can't get in this area, some of the really unique stuff. So they have this subscription service and basically an iPad. And then it's in one of the rooms, so you don't have to like let everybody watch you when you do it. But you can, you can start the stuff and be in, in the room off to the side and then have the custom workout sitting there. It's all on video for you. We got like a sixty or whatever inch TV, so it's ideal. So the nice thing is, like, I've done like P ninety X and stuff in the past, and maybe you don't have the video anymore, or we've got the videos for that stuff. And so it, it is good. So that's there. And then we're in the process right now, it's going to take a little bit more time, but to move your, the weights and some other, other things that are already in the back and move them towards the front and reconfigure the lobby. And when we do that, we're also in the process of making it sort of want to be a twenty-four-hour[1697.21] facility for the weights and exercise equipment. And that's going to take a little bit of time because we've got several things, including access control and some restroom updates that have to get done, but we are in the process of doing that. And then the parking lot reconfiguration and repaving is in process. One of the things we found from talking with the seniors and just seeing where our current spots are, is there's not a lot of places for scene, or for people with mobility issues to park because the handicap spots are pretty far away. So we're having staff take a look at how this is configured and then we'll be doing some repaving out there and adding additional handicap accessible spots up, up towards the front. And then on the bottom right-hand side, this kicked off a couple of weeks ago, is one of the things that we had talked about a month or so ago as far as the, some of the art of money. This is in Black, Blacksburg, yeah, Blacksburg, we went over there. So this is a, it's the same company that makes the, our existing, the wooden playground at the Coombs. And so over the last year or so, when we, when things would break on it, you call them and there's no, they won't make that stuff anymore. And, you know, it has a twenty-year life expectancy. I think it's thirty-three years old, give or take. So we've gotten our money's worth out of it. So what this one over here is, is this is what they put over in Blacksburg. And then we've just started the process of getting the buy-in from the, from the schools and from the different groups. But what we'll be able to do with that is eventually come to where we have a community bill. Now, council funded the, the procurement of a rough number of what we have, but like this, the, the fall service is about two hundred thousand. Now, we can keep the wooden stuff, which is what they did in Blacksburg. Problem with the wooden stuff is it gets dirty, it's not cheap to replace. And, you know, if you're going to build something that's accessible, go with the, go with the fall service from a lot of different reasons. It's not cheap, but the long-term of it is, it's, it'll be, you know, it's more accessible for the children and if they fall, they're not going to get hurt as much. And so that is all in the process. But the goal is, is to have it done by this time next year, be completely done. It will be a community bill, but by doing the community bill aspect of it, we get a lot of buy-in from that. And then if you have a, a name ticket that, that you bought many years ago, those are ones that will transfer over to the new ones. And I told Cam I wanted to buy at least five and he gets this.
Already have one.
Yeah, the special attorney price is like a thousand bucks. Yeah, if everybody else forced the work on price.
Not transfer.
Yeah, yes, we are going to transfer those because I know that was a community build years ago and there's a lot of love in the community from, from when they built it the first time. And I've talked to several folks that were involved in that. And it, it's a neat idea. When this is done, it will be something we can be proud of. And it, it's already an amazing place, but it'll be even amazing, it's not even going to work, but we'll use it anyway. The other, the other jewel we have obviously is, is the Meadows. Now, the Meadows, that we did the butt, the pumping bike skills track and we just hydroseated that about a week and a half ago, so that's coming along. It's, it's being used. If, if you're friends with your orthopedic surgeon, I could recommend a trip or two around it. At my age, I'm not even, I'll look at someone on it, I ain't doing it. But it is a great thing because kids are out there on it and adults that are more skilled physically than I am are out there on it as well. One of the things we do with tourism is we track the tourists that are out there. Last year, we had about two hundred and sixty thousand visitors out there during the tournaments and all that. And this year, we've got, or this, last year, we had forty-four weeks of tournament schedule. Now, rain messes with this, but what they've been able to do is like a couple of weeks ago, we had a Saturday rain out, they had a Sunday tournament anyway. So we're easily able to get folks in there. Last year, we had the Little League baseball folks. This year, we've got Little League softball for the state tournament. Last year, they, they really loved it. They loved staff and it was a nice facility. Same thing with, with the girls softball. And then the, the high school and the league soccer are also out there now. Now, the splash pad, although we did break ground up, we did the groundbreaking that last May, the, the recirculation tank that is in process, we hope to have that done within a month and a half. It'll be open before, before May first, is what they're telling us. And then the bottom right-hand side, so one of our road trips, we went over to Johnson City. And over in Johnson City, at the university there, they had these in their concrete cornhole torn, cornhole boards. And so they're about five hundred pounds, so the chances of them getting stolen are really slim. But we, we put those out and you see it's soccer fields behind it. So if you're out there for an event or an all-day tournament, you know, you can bring your bags and you can go out there and play. And if they get utilized a lot, we can always add more. But just trying to make it so that, you know, sometimes those tournaments are long and it gives you something to do otherwise. And so that was just something that we added very recently, like last week. One of the things that we do and the reason we're able to get so much done is because Public Works, they work. Those folks really get after it. Like you mentioned earlier, the Christmas decorations, we made them in-house for about a third of the cost. And as, as we expand the look and appeal of Main Street during the Christmas season, I want to be able to have more and more of those things out there because it just adds to the look and feel. The Creeper Trail, as Kevin mentioned, there is a, the ash tree, there was a lot of dead ash out there. And I had someone from the, that owns the land out there message me and said, hey, you know, what, what's going on? And when he found out Kevin was involved, he was like, oh, it's okay. So he gave us, he gave us some credibility there, but there was a lot of dead, dead ash trees out there. And so they did have to get rid of those. Now, we go back as staff and add gravel whenever we, whenever we need to. It just makes for a nicer riding experience, particularly that first couple of miles when you're in town until you get out to the edge. And then snow removal, our staff, you know, they did a great job. Now, the, most of the staff that we have now weren't here last time we had snow, so they just went out and got it done. So we're very appreciative of that, but Public Works does all that stuff. The relocation, when we got the inclusive playground at, at the Meadows, they were able to take the old stuff and re, re-put it out to other parts of the town where they already had some equipment, but now they've got more equipment. And I think that was well-received in the different areas that got it. And the banner pole installation, the nice thing is, is we do it ourselves. And we do it ourselves, sometimes we've got to rent equipment, but it's a whole lot cheaper